All right. Okay. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our county council meeting for July 9th, 2020, and welcome those that are following along live streaming. And again, morning, council and staff. So moving forward with our agenda that is published, this time I'll ask our deputy clerk the roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So it looks like we have all counselors present except for Counselor Desai at this time. But I will keep an eye out for him to see when he joins.
Yes, because yeah, with his notice of motion later as well. So, okay, very good. Then moving forward then, is there any declaration of community interest with the members today? Right? If one does arise, you can declare at that time. Moving forward, then I have Counselor Robinson and Counselor Carlton are moving the minutes of June 25th. Council and committed the whole. Is there any discussion in those minutes that wishes to be brought board? Any errors or missions? All right, seeing not anybody opposed to those minutes? Hearing none, that is carried. All right. And then moving forward then with regards to reports, item five. We have moved by Counselor Patterson and second by Counselor Hicks, Deputy Warden. The adoption of the Board of Health minutes and to receive for information and Counselor Patterson, Mayor of Hanover, do you wish to address any of those minutes at all, or?
Dr. Era is present, who I, yes.
Okay, very good. Well, I'll go to Dr. Era then if he would like to address those minutes or highlights.
Good morning, Warden. Good morning, council. The minutes from the previous board meeting, the highlights are the update from the MOH about the recovery from the pandemic reopening stages. We continue to proceed with safe reopening that is reasonably as fast as we can under the safety condition. And the number of cases, the doubling time, all the indicators, the indicators from epidemiology reflect full control over the outbreak and the health unit continues to support businesses and ensuring that the reopening is safe in a way that the risk is mitigated. And we prepare for the third stage that should be in near future. There, from corporate point of view, there were three updates noted in the minutes. The one-time funding for the temporary pandemic pay initiative, a letter that came from the ministry outlining that type of funding that some of our staff might qualify for. The second one is extraordinary expenses associated with the COVID-19. And that would be calculated based on the budget, the annual budget. Any expenses beyond the budget that is related to COVID will be covered. And the, there was another item internally to the health unit to have expenses related to reducing the risk of transmission, workstations and partitions. And there is the need for it and just to happen in a short period of time. So the regular policy that we have to recommend for cost and sorry to look for quotes has limited amount of time. So it came to the board for approval. And not a major item, but these are the three items. From the health unit, it's worth mentioning that the health unit is preparing for mandating masking or issuing an order, an O H order that would facilitate this. And the, there has been communication with the municipalities and the chiefs of police and fire and other relevant stakeholders to ensure that the policy will be proportionate or the order will be proportionate. The estimated time to implement such order, in our opinion, is to be aligned with the reopening stage number three. And the reasons beyond it are a couple folds. We look at three major types of input of data. One, the epidemiology. Two, the the compliance from the public with orders in general. And three, the consistency in the system. So with the epidemiology, there hasn't been much change. As I mentioned, there is full control of the outbreak. The compliance data, there is more indication that the social distancing and social bubble has, have been not in optimal compliance. So, and that's expected fatigue from the messaging and fatigue from the intervention to be taking place after a few months from the implementation. And, and that's a reason why we can add the mask in public places as an added layer, not a replacement. And the final set of data is related to consistency, consistency with other parts of the system. Other health units have implemented the intervention, whether through a bylaw or an order or letter based on the current regulations in stage two. And so going forward, that order, the plan is to have, the rough plan is to have an order in place to start with for four weeks. And then if the third stage would carry regulations would allow us to mandate it through a letter, not a bylaw or an order, we would go to the least intrusive, which is a letter. If it doesn't, we would extend the order until a bylaw could be in place or until further variables and emergency changes that would allow us to rescind the order completely without mandating it. And it's worth mentioning a few points about the implementation of this. It would be in indoors, public places where traffic and where the public could access the facilities. It's not in the outdoors. And there are a list of exemptions, including many settings that already regulated, whether it's hospitals, schools, daycare and others. And the, there should be consideration for medical conditions that prevent people from wearing a mask, whether it's asthma or autism or any other development or disorder would make it intolerable for a person to wear a mask. Those will be built in. The, the final point I want to mention that there has been discussion among different stakeholders, including with other MOHs, and we're trying to best of our ability to have consistency across the province. It goes without mentioning, consistency is valuable and in building, ensuring trust from the system, from the public into the system and different organizations of the establishment. And that's my update, Mr. Chair. Open for questions.
Well, thank you, Dr. Era. And thank you for your very thorough discussion about your points there. Are there any discussion or any questions to Dr. Era in council?
Warden McQueen, I have one.
Okay, go ahead, Mayor Patterson. And then Counselor Mackey, I think is next.
Thank you, Warden. Thank you, Dr. Era, for the update. And I think everyone will remember that during our conversation, our discussions with Dr. Era, we were speaking about an upper tier bylaw with Bruce and Gray counties. And I'm wondering, do we need a motion or just a recommendation that we ask staff to bring a report back about what that bylaw would entail? There are lots of municipalities working on it right now and staff, maybe Kim, you'd like to speak to that. But I think it'd be appropriate to have a report so that we are consistent throughout Gray and Bruce. And it would make it a lot easier for all our residents, let alone all of our councils.
Thank you for that. Madam CEO, do you have a comment there or Dr. Era?
I'm working in collaboration with our solicitor, Michael Ternell. I think certainly that's something that staff would be more than happy to undertake. But I'll take my direction on this from, from Dr. Era with regard to, to timing and content. Dr. Era is, you know, starting to work on a draft bylaw and bringing a report back with those considerations about content and enforcement considerations, et cetera. Is that something that you're looking for us to undertake?
Dr. Era?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Definitely, that's highly recommended advice to, to, to start working on it. Again, we hope for the best, prepare for the worst. If the third stage would carry a regulation that would allow us to issue a letter of strong recommendation based on the regulation, that a bylaw might not be needed. However, if those regulations are not there or happen to change halfway in the third stage, it's, it's prudent to have a bylaw in place or the preparation for it ready to be passed ahead of time. So I strongly recommend this. And I've been working with Michael on, on aligning both the order and the potential bylaw to have seamless transition if there needs to be.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Era. I know I did see a draft last night. I took a read through it. And Counselor Patterson, do you have any follow-up on that?
No, just whether we need a recommendation or an actual motion, either way, I'm, I can move it or staff is aware we need a report.
Well, certainly it's probably good to have it in play if we need it for sure. Madam CEO or Deputy Clerk, what would you wish?
If we could have a formal resolution at this time, that would be in order for staff to bring back a report to the next committee of the whole meeting incorporating the information that Dr. Era has provided.
Okay, so Counselor Patterson is moving that. Do I have a?
Sorry, Warden. We do have the Board of Health minutes and report on the floral.
Oh, yes, yes.
So we can bring that forward after.
Yes, yes, I apologize. Thanks for keeping me online here, Deputy Clerk. So I think we'll go back to you, Sue, on that. But I think Counselor Mackey had a question next, I think. Go ahead, Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Thanks, Dr. Era, for your update. Just in regards to if the order, when the order is issued by the, the health unit, people with, with health conditions that aren't able to wear a mask, what proof will they have to provide that they have a health condition?
So only, it's, it would be a good faith policy where, where they would just declare that I cannot tolerate it for a condition. And there is, in the planning, we considered having something similar to the seat belt law where a note would be provided from a healthcare provider. However, this might entail overburdening the healthcare system in two or three weeks after issuing the order with requests from many people or a number of people for notes. And again, the, the underlying principle with this order is to ensure the behavior of wearing a mask is introduced into the society and normalize it to a certain degree. If we think of analogy, it would be the helmet use for riding a bicycle. There is a law, but it's far in between when you would find somebody's actually enforcing it or writing a ticket for it. People police themselves, the society learns from setting that limit to understand that this is something useful, helpful, and hopefully with education and, and that awareness. The, the goal would be achieved by increasing the proportion of people who are using masks. The goal is not to penalize people or to have heavy enforcement. And that circles back to your question, the burden of proof is, is minimal. It's just declaration that I have a health condition prevent me from using it.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for that. Mackey, any other questions with regards to the minutes that are there? All right, anybody opposed to those set of minutes? Okay, that is carried. So going back to your motion, Counselor Patterson, so you shall move that. Do I have a second or for that motion? I'm looking at my screen here. I see Counselor Burley. Okay, that's on the floor. Discussions, any further comments, Counselor Patterson, before I go to further discussion? Hearing none. Other, other comments? So this is to bring back a report. Is this, I guess everybody understands the motion that's on the floor. I know Counselor Patterson, I think you made a comment a few weeks back that we should just automatically be wearing masks when we're in those locations. And I think we probably all agree to that. All right, so that, is anybody opposed to that, that motion? Okay, that is carried. I see Counselor Desai is, is with us. So I think we have a full complement of county counselors now. There is a bylaw that's in front of us. And this is bylaw 508920 for the Markdale Hospital. And it's moved by Counselor Mackey and second by Counselor Millen. Discussion on that, or sort of Madam CEO, do you wish to make any comments to that?
I mute myself. There we are. Thank you, Mr. Warden. I think this is actually a really, really positive day for, for Great Grant County and for Great Bruce Health Services. It's been a long time and a lot of work and a lot of support has gone into making this transfer possible. I think that the hospital is, is working closely with the province and looking forward to being able to move forward with their, the next phase in the approval process for the new hospital in Markdale. This is critical. And I really want to thank Randy and his team and the people at the hospital for working so well together to iron out the myriad of details that it took to, to bring us to here. So well done, everyone.
Well, thank you, Madam CEO. And just to echo your comments that, yeah, this has been quite an experience, to say the least. And we're moving forward. And I'm glad to see Counselor Millen is the seconder of this bylaw. Thanks for that. And certainly a very aggressive timeframe that's in play. I know you and I met with Gary Sims last, last week or the week before, along with other stakeholders and very positive moving forward. Gray Highlands is, is moving forward with the site plan as well to move the, this project on to the next stage for sure. Questions from county counselors? Thanks, Kim. Any questions? Counselor Mill?
The question I had was, and it refers back to the original bylaw from 2005. The value of the lands is to be determined by the, by an appraiser at the time of the land transfer. When was the appraisal done? And who was the appraiser?
Madam CEO?
Randy will speak to that.
Yeah, okay. So the, the appraisal was done in 2015. It was done by Dale Mitchell, local land appraiser that we've utilized for other appraisals in the past. You know, we recognize that it's, you know, sometimes it's been, it's been five years, obviously, from, from the last appraisal. In saying that, there are lands on the site that are contaminated. And, you know, the price to be able to remediate some of those, those lands has also gone up in value. So that was a definite factor in the, the appraised value at the time. I think at the time, the appraised value was around 400,000 for the land. But that was reduced by the, the cost to remediate some of the contaminated lands. So we think that although the land value prices have increased, obviously in the last five years, also the price to remediate some of the contaminated soils has increased. So we think at the end of the day, it's likely a wash. And so at this time, staff are comfortable proceed with, with the appraised value minus the, the cost of, of the land contamination factored in as part of that analysis.
Thanks, Randy. Any follow-up, Counselor Millen?
Yeah, so to clarify then, have, has the contamination been dealt with yet?
Randy?
It has not been. So that, in the agreement, it indicates that Grabber's Health Services would be responsible for, for the cost to, to remediate that. So that's, that's been built in as part of the agreement. And that's part of some of the work that they want to get going in terms of late summer, early fall, doing some initial site prep work so that they can get going with construction. So this, as Kim indicated, is a critical piece. It, it gets us one step further and closer for, to actually get the lands in the hands of Grabber's Health Services. So Gray Highlands, as, as Warden McQueen indicated, can issue the site plan approval and then get the building permits in hands. They can start construction.
Okay, thank you very much. So then, if I might, Mr. Warden. So the balance of the million dollars would be payable at the time when construction starts? Or when would that piece be triggered?
So Randy or Madam CEO?
Yeah, so the, the conditions in the agreement indicate that it would be at the, the funds would be, have been placed in reserve. So we have those currently in reserve. And they'd be transferred to Grabber's Health Services upon the latter of the date of the latest building permit or the date upon which Grabber's Health Services receives all necessary approvals for the hospital. So we would, the agreement speaks to the, the timing when those funds would be released. And the 780,000 would also be minus any cost related to survey work. Because there's been significant survey work that's been part of the, the challenge and delay to get it to this stage as well as any, any work with respect to the property appraisal that was done previously.
Okay, thank you. Good questions, Brian. And any other questions from county counselors? All right, any opposed to this resolution? Hearing none, that is carried. Okay, so we certainly look for that opportunity to do the side turning later on this year. Hopefully, everything will move forward. And as Madam CEO and Randy has said, is, you know, that site preparation and all those things are definitely in need of. And I think there might be, maybe remnants of the old home somewhere there. I'm not sure. But anyway, we'll leave it at that and move on. So good news and celebrations. So last couple of times, there has been a list provided, but I've made my own list. So I'm going to go around. And this time, I know, I think last time West Gray was last, so I'm going to go with West Gray first. So Christine and Tom, I'm going to go with you guys first.
Sure. Well, good morning, Warden, and good morning, everyone. I would just like to say and encourage everyone to shop local, support local and while observing all of the COVID-19 protocols. Thank you very much. Looking forward to committee of the whole after this.
Thank you, Mayor Robinson and Counselor Hutchinson. Anything to add?
Morning, Warden and County Council. I know the only thing I could say is, I just looked at the weather this morning. We do have some rain coming. So I think that's the good news that I'd like to share. Thank you.
It depends if you're a hay farmer.
Well, I've got lots of guys that are looking for the rain, so bring it on.
We do need the rain, but we got about an extra rain here two days ago. So just, just a big 15, 20 minute downpour. So it's just.
We've had nothing down here at all, nothing at all. So I know roundness is getting a little bit, but yeah, we desperately need it a little bit. Anyway, thank you.
For the crops. Thanks for the reminder. And next I'll go to Owen Sound, their body.
Really nothing to add. Some of us are getting our beards trimmed on Saturday, raising money for the hospital, your gloves and masks and things. That's O S H foundation.ca/Beards, but nothing really else to report. It's hot. Thanks.
You look pretty dapper there, their body. I must say, you got that waxed mustache there and it's good, it's good.
It's, it's just grease from Kentucky Fried Chicken.
Well, whatever works. You may want to get that cleaned up before Saturday, but anyway. Counselor O'Leary?
Nothing, Mr. Warden. Good morning, everyone.
Are you out golfing yet?
A whole bunch. And I will be by noon today, too, I think, one day.
You absolutely will be. All right. So we're going to move over to Blue Mountain this time. And Mary Sowever?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just like to report that the candidate, virtual candidate celebration, which we, was organized by Collingwood, the, the resort and the town of Blue Mountains was a big success. A lot of local entertainers, they visited a lot of local establishments like the Spy Ciderie and Smitty's Bike Shop, who gave excellent infomercials about what you can purchase there. So it was good for promoting local business. And I'd also like to mention that our grants and donations program is going well. The Community Challenge distributed $7,000, $3,500 to the BVO Meal Program and $3,500 to the Anglican Church Meal Program, which is organized by Chef Gene Knight. And there's still another $8,000 in the treasury. People have continued to donate to that. And so there is money for community projects in our grants and donations program. And to supplement the coffers, the grants and donations program, together with the lead, the Marsh Street Center and the BVO are, we're doing a drive-by lobster fest on July 25th. So anybody can drive by and pick up a lobster dinner. Or if you're not into lobster, there's also the choice of chicken. And that is going to be a fundraiser, which will be a bit different than the old lobster fest. But you can certainly do a drive-by lobster fest. That's all I have.
Can we place our orders with you to pick it up for us?
We, we can certainly do that.
All right. Well, thank you, Mary. Oh, Mary Sowever.
We'll deliver the lobster if you provide the refreshments when we get there.
Oh, well, I guess we could work at that for sure. I know, Mary Sowever, you were fortunate to get in with the premier yesterday. You going to mention that?
Oh, yeah. Well, that was another good news story. We, we, we have had a lot of visitors from the city and it's caused an issue at our beaches. So we've, we're in the process of hiring another six to eight bylaw officers, which will bring our complement to 13. They'll be out giving people advice on social distancing and controlling parking on the beaches. And one of the issues that we've had is the lack of beach space and the speed on Highway 26. So the premier did promise that he would respond to my letter, which I sent him a few days ago. But I was able to get in on the call and we will be reducing, he said, they will be reducing the speed limit through Craiglea on Highway 26 to 50. Because there is, there are a lot of people walking across the highway and people turning in and out of beach accesses. And it is a dangerous spot. There was one motor vehicle accident on the weekend. There was an involved, fortunately, nobody got hurt. But it is an issue. So the, the speed limit on 26 will be slowing down. So anybody going towards Collingwood, please use an alternate route so you don't get frustrated by the slower speed limit.
And, and the premier promised you his cell number as well. So we look forward to that. Thanks, thanks, Mary Sowever. Counselor Potter, anything to add?
The mayor kind of took what I was going to talk about, the lobster fest dinner. I, I'm not sure I would trust the mayor to deliver my dinner intact. So you can take your chance there. But the other thing I would mention is that our library and the Craiglea Heritage Depot both continue to have their online programs going on, which are for people of all ages. So just go to the website at Blue Mountains Public Library and there'll be lots of things going on pretty much every day, some sort of activity online.
Okay, well, thanks, Counselor Potter. Now we'll move over to Miford and Mayor Columbus.
I'm mute myself. Good morning, everyone. Thanks. Just, just to report that, like everyone, we are finding some challenges with this extra hot weather. Our, our limited beaches are pretty full, although people are being very respectful. I'm noticing a lot more masks being worn, which is a good thing. As always, we're noticing a few more faces than usual, new faces in our community. And some issues are happening in Memorial Park, which has just opened. And we are going to have to be looking at increased bylaw officers for that as well. So it's, we're, we're moving along and enjoying the summer. And hopefully, we'll be. And hopefully, we'll be getting a stronger message out about wearing face masks and being respectful of public property and each other. I don't have anything more to say except to everybody, nice day, weekend, and thank you.
Well, thanks, Mayor, Mayor Barcombus, and Council Keveney, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning, everyone. Yes, just a couple of things. From our recovery task force, just to mention to everyone that our restaurant patios are open, and they look great, and they're busy. And that's bringing a little bit of a hub of activity to our downtown. Another initiative of our task force is we're taking the empty storefronts and having the windows cleaned inside by Community Living, and we're going to display artwork in those windows, just to keep the downtown looking just a little more vibrant, and recognizing that masks are becoming mandatory, and, and also knowing that perhaps they may be more difficult to acquire. So we do have 365 Sports in Meaford that is a distributor for PPE. So if any of the lower tiers are in need of masks, reach out to me and I'll get you the contact for 365, and, and they can be a supplier. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Keveney. I'm sure ice cream's flying off your counter before it melts.
Oh, it is indeed.
All right, so I'm going to go to, thank you for that. I'm going to go to Southgate and Mayor Woodbury.
Thank you. As usual, it's, everything's really good in Southgate. The weather's perfect. And our beaches are, aren't overcrowded here. We do have a beach, but yeah, I haven't been there. So things are going well, and according to my wife, the good news is Saturday with the beards getting shaved. So we'll, I may even wear a tie to the next meeting, just to confuse everybody, clean-shaved, tie. So Joy, we're seeing a lot of innovation, a lot of people adapting to what's going on in the businesses, and it's, it's really encouraging. So that's Southgate, but Brian probably knows more.
Well, thanks, Mayor Woodbury, and your wife will get a new man.
Yeah.
Yeah, the neighborhood won't know who you are anymore.
Will the beard be back in time for Christmas? It won't be the same without Santa Claus at council table.
Well, we, like I said, we could do this again in November for me, so it's okay.
Soon as you get, soon as you get that shaved off, the, the temperature will drop 10 degrees, so. Okay, thank you for that. And Council Millen?
Nothing to add other living the dream down here in Southgate, waiting for O'Leary to invite me for a round of golf.
Just be careful, you might need your armor. I will say, Council Millen, you have, you win the prize next to Council Gamble for the best backdrop, I must say. All right, so now we're going to go to Georgian Bluffs and Mayor Burley.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. We in Georgian Bluffs are very excited about our new CEO starting very soon. We get to meet him face-to-face Friday morning. It was a different process for us, everything video, all our interviews, extremely different. It is great. We're all excited about John Norton coming to join Georgian Bluffs. And I want to send out a special thank you to Anne Marie Shaw for all her expertise helping us through these trying times until we had our new CEO on place, and just a special thank you to her. She did a tremendous job. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mayor Burley, and from County Council and myself as a warden, send all our best to your new warden, and again, thanks, Anne Marie, for taking on this extra duty. Okay, and Council Carlton, do you have anything to add? Council Carlton?
I'm here. Sorry. Yes, I too agree with Mayor Burley. We're quite excited, looking forward to John Norton coming. And thank you to Anne Marie for everything that she's done for us. I would also comment that Georgian Bluffs is under a total burn ban. I can't believe anyone would actually want to light a fire in this weather, but complete burn ban. And we have two patios open, one at Elsie's and the other at the airport, that I can't believe the mayor missed mentioning. So that's what's new in Georgian Bluffs today.
Okay, well, holy smokes, Council Carlton, maybe he's keeping that radio to himself. Maybe he'll offer that when he gets his lobster dinner delivered. So there we go. Okay, well, thank you for that. And now we'll move over to Hanover and Mayor Patterson.
Thank you, Warden McQueen. Good morning, everyone. Still living the dream in Hanover. It must be the southern municipalities of Gray that live in the, live, live the dream. I just want to brag a little bit. Our Canada Day virtual presentation was spectacular, and the many online and offline events, such as the most patriotic decorating challenge and the scavenger hunt, were a blast. And I thoroughly enjoyed judging the houses and the businesses. I thought maybe there might be a dozen, so not a big job, 29 houses and nine businesses. So it was, it was great. It made me feel really proud to be Canadian, and so very proud of everyone in Hanover showing their Hanover spirit. That's it for Hanover. Thank you.
From the southern parts of Gray County, thank you, Mayor Patterson, and Council Deputy Warden.
Hi, good morning, Mr. Warden. So the mayor was judging, and my homes was one of the homes in the 27, and hey, what happened? I thought I had an in with the mayor. Apparently not. My wife is really looking forward to getting rid of this thing on Saturday. So I urge everyone, I'm competitive, too. I want to win. I want to have the most donations possible. So please visit OSHfoundation.ca/Beards and sponsor, but especially sponsor me. I also want to say that I'm really excited, because at the beginning of the year, I was really trying to get one of those sites at Memorial Park, because they're very difficult to get. So I sent away my application. I got back. We did get a space, and then COVID happened. So then I lost my space, but in the last week, I went to their website, and out of the blue, one of the most perfect sites was available for the dates that I needed. And so I will be going to Memorial Park, and so I'm really, really looking forward to spending some time at Memorial Park. That's it for me, Mr. Warden.
Well, thank you, Council Deputy Warden, and maybe you have, you have to do the commercial with Kentucky Fried Chicken to. All right, well, thank you for that. And moving on then to Chatsworth and Mayor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Morning, Council. Not a lot to report from the country of Chatsworth. I hope our friends in the southern municipalities that are dreaming are not delusional. But things, things continue to roll along. Lots of traffic on Highway 6 and 10. People coming up from the GTA, so that has its pros and cons. Good for tourism, maybe not so good for COVID. But we are looking forward to a rain this afternoon. Unlike Gray Highlands, all the good farmers in Chatsworth have their hay all off, and it's nicely stored away. Take care.
Well, thank you, Mayor Mackey, and yes, it's good that your farmers are ahead of the times. Council Gamble?
Yes, good morning, Warden McQueen and Council. We have a kind of a good news story in Chatsworth. We have a pharmacy opening up where the bank used to be. So that's an added feature we're looking forward to, and a new service station in the future. Contrary to what my mayor just said, we're in the second cut hay, and we do need, need the rain, and I hope we do get it. That's pretty well my version.
I would think the corn likes this heat, though, right? Just needs a bit of drink, probably.
That's great.
Okay, well, thank you, Council Gamble. And last but not least, we'll move on to Chats, or sorry, Gray Highlands. And Akash, Deputy Warden.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden, for saving the best for the last. I'd like to point out, I was a little surprised with Chatsworth's treatment of Gray Highlands and their farmers. I was not expecting that, so I don't have a rebuttal for that, but I would, I would like, I would like for Council Mackey to know that, you know, in Gray Highlands, you've got the best farmers. We're going to plant all the crops, and we're going to make Alpe Town of Blue Mountains, we're going to make them pay for it. On, on a different note, I would also like to point out that I'm also one of the people shaving my beards, whatever you call this now, on Saturday, but three weeks ago or so, I, I did email Counciler Body and say, is that still happening or not? My beard's getting itchy, and I can't do it anymore. It's getting hot. And he said, oh, yeah, I don't think it's happening. Shave it off. I shaved it off, and then, would you know it, two days later, it's on again. So this is three weeks worth. So I do hope, instead of Counciler Body or Councilor Hicks, you would, you would go and sponsor me. Councilor Hicks has provided the link, and, or of course, Councilor Woodbury, yeah. But, you know, I, I will miss that Santa Claus beard there.
I've got the most to lose.
Also, Councilor, Councilor Dodd from Owen Sound. I, I think any money donated towards this campaign would not be wasted. That, that beard needs to go. On a bit more of a serious note, this, this Saturday, we're having the 150th commemoration of, of the lynching of William Luke. And there was seven other black men who were lynched with him in Alabama. The reason it's significant is Mr. Mr. William Luke was from the Flashland area, and he was a black man who went down to Alabama to teach black men how to read and write and so on. There, it's going to be a very small gathering, keeping COVID in mind. It's, it's going to be a very solemn gathering as well. There's a few articles that Mr. Butler, who's the resident historical expert in Gray Highlands, has, had sent to us, which I'll be forwarding on to the rest of council. It's, it's a, it's a moving, moving story, and, and very poignant in the times that we live in today. I, I know the videographer from the Gray Highlands Public Library will be filming it, so hopefully, you guys will virtually attend it once the, once the video is up on social media. Thank you very much, Mr. Mr. Warden.
Well, thank you, Council Desai and Deputy Mayor, and yes, that will be a very important event this Saturday morning. I think it's 11 o'clock at the pavilion at the Southeast Gray Museum. I just want to say a few things in the sense of, I did a warden's address on July 1st under my front porch of my farmhouse. My lovely wife was videoing me, and, and we forward that on to for a virtual Canada Day address from myself on behalf of all county council. Hope you're able to see that. Certainly, we have a group, a kinsman group are looking at, trying to organize a drive-in movie at one of our facilities, and just going through the process of, of, of working at that. And just in the sense, I understand, yesterday, there was a great meeting with the community and stakeholders with regards to the Eugenia Falls and how, how to move forward with regards to, you know, implementing sort of a, a new, a new mandate with regards to that area. So that's all I have to, to bring. And I just want to say to Council Woodbury, you've got that ZZ Top look. If anybody knows ZZ Top, so. Madam, Madam CEO, do you have any good news and celebrations from county council or staff, or anything that you wish to address to, before we move on?
I think the one thing I'd like to share with council, and again, I think we're all missing having you here in the building. You know, a shout-out to our new health and safety manager, Janice, as well as Anne Marie and her staff. Everyone really working together on the new policies and procedures and retrofitting this building to make things as safe as they can be for staff to begin to come back and, and work in the building starting on Monday. So we're going to be doing that in a couple of cohorts. So about 50% of people will be back on Monday. We remain close to the, to the public for right now, and continuing with our virtual service provision, with the exception of the Provincial Offenses Court, who will be on an appointment basis, open to the public who need to complete some, some paperwork in a, in a face-to-face manner. So slowly, we, we ease back into our operations and opening up the building, but an awful lot of work has, has gone into this. And we're really hopeful that we've met the standard, and we'll be able to keep everybody safe.
Well, thank you, Madam CEO, and certainly the province is moving forward on their phases. And, and I think there was an announcement yesterday, some changes to the POA and, and a number of things. And there was a, there was a, us mayors were on a call, or were invited to be on a call yesterday with Minister Clark, along with the premier that Mayor Swever was speaking about, and, and it was a good opportunity to listen to what they're, and it's, it's came out today with regards to their bill that they're moving out with some, some major changes. It is interesting that they are looking at permanently allowing councils to do the, what we're doing right now. Yeah, and, and having that. And also, I thought it was interesting with the proxy vote, right? That's, that's sort of, I wasn't sure where that came from, but the ability from another council to vote for somebody on council, I thought that was interesting, through a proxy, and, and they're talking about DC charges. So certainly, I would say that's probably going to be setting us up for AMO and a lot of probably dialogue on those items that they are bringing forward. And I know AMO has sent out, last night I was reading, where they have made comments to certain sections of their changes, so.
I think, Mr. Warden, if I may, that we'll be, you know, digesting the assessment of that, all of the different things that are in that omnibus bill, and the guidance from AMO and from our various associations and that, and likely bringing back a staff report for all of you that really speaks to the parts of this that are very, you know, going to have specific implications for Gray County.
Absolutely. So, okay, well, thank you, everyone, and good discussion. And it's always good to hear all the great things that are happening out there. So I do have a motion by Council Burley and second by Council Millen that we adjourn. Anybody opposed to that? That is carried. Okay.